Hi, CAG, we get your plate at this time. We're about to call this meeting the Cleveland County Board of Commissioner's Board. All commissioners are present at this time. And our next order of business will be our first pledge of allegiance and dedication to the county clerk, Gary Milton.
Actually, sir, we have Christopher Forge here tonight. He's a member of the National Guard. He's going to lead us in our pledge and Allen in the introduction.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight to conduct the business of Cleveland County. Please let all the decisions made here tonight positively affect our citizens in a way that is also pleasing to you. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
At this time, if there are any elected officials who continue to stand and be ready, please, and then you remember the expectation of better. You are never to stand and be ready. And pardon him. He'll stand and be ready now.
They're going to do better than that. About taking name, uh, very little. What work?
Phil Carter, Land Department.
Chris Kirk, County Commissioner.
Allison, Allison, many resources.
Thank you guys coming tonight. Our next two items is our proposed agenda, agenda that you had before you. At this time, I know that the first is that I had at Island Hill, emergency management budget amendment, and then our number eighteen, the regulation for project, a little well-known.
Okay. Now, so to addition, if you have anything to add. I have motion for the post-election from last year. Second, said, um, Christian, all the favor, sentiment, consideration, I'm sorry, she and I, pretty much. Next is citizen recognition. Citizens, any person who wishes to speak to us, they have not signed, I think so at this time, unless you want to register. Anyone who wishes to speak to us, they come up to us, tell us who you are and what you want to speak about, and then we'll start from the beginning and recover that. Anyone who wishes to speak to the county commissioner, free and timely.
Good evening.
Page nine, page eight.
Get out from the Cleveland County Rules for that. Um, I hate to be here again on the same topic, but while I was on vacation, some horrible things happened. I don't know if I can stand during my trial. I have had it. I have spoken for you guys. I have attended the health department meetings, to only be swam by Sam Lockridge. And I've heard that the county commissioner that's over this area, all we want to do is let him retire for just five more years. We do not have five more years. These volunteers sitting right here, there were twelve hundred animals rescued from this shelter last year, and it was not from the Humane Society. It was these people sitting here, volunteers throughout Cleveland County. I am at this point very, very, very upset. I've heard several of the commissioners say that you have a huge compassion for animals. It must just be the Boston Harriers. We constantly have asked for change at the shelter. We got rid of a person out of the health department who was not eligible to run a health department, who didn't even know how you could get babies. She's gone. It's time to make a change. Sam does a really good job of burying and concealing trash, but he has not the first clue about animals, not even compassion. We have to make a change. I'm tired of begging. You as commissioners should get off your thumbs and go and look at these counties that are making highway success. Without having to wring in your nose and drag them to a meeting, or begging to pay attention to what's going on. They killed dogs that were willing, people were coming to pick up. They're killing mothers with babies because they say they're not a friend of it. They'll kill the mother and leave the babies. They brought someone on now, thank God, but they brought her on as a volunteer and now they want to pay her because now, because that's going to run into the volunteer thing. There's waivers that volunteers can sign for dog bites, just the same as any other county. It's enough. It's time to make a change. It's a time, it's time for our county to stop looking disgraceful to the rest of the world and step up to the plate and do something.
Yeah, good.
I was down here here for about half the Cleveland County, new car has become there. And it totally been worked on, waited here, and now to add insult and injury, increased their county car tax. Their insurance doubled because of no car has become there. And taxes in this county for fifty years, and not once in fifty years have I seen a town sanction office, state limits of shelving, part of people taking down. I'd just like to see if we get on the bottom of this.
On your side.
How do you say my address?
Thank you.
108, Punchoult, Cherryville. I'm here on behalf of the concerned citizens of Cleveland County, here in, uh, those who gas cheaper. Promotion for animals is intimately connected with goodness of character and may be confidently asserted that he who is cruel to animals cannot be a good person. The wisdom in this quote should be remembered and applied to all, including and especially those who serve the people as civic leaders. No one in the leadership role should be a bad character, nor should they hire or give positions to people with bad character. Being aware of the cruel actions and not doing anything about it makes one equally guilty about hiding from and ignoring responsibility. Both cruelty and incompetency are omnipotent at CCAC. Citizens need to notice, they found animal control is one of the only few shelters who still torture innocent animals by using gas as their diet. Donations to improve the life and death of the innocent animals have been rejected. Animals deserve that. Dogs and cats can predict earthquakes and tsunamis, they can detect serious illnesses in animals like us or in humans and come to their aid. They loyally serve people and our military. They save lives, often at the expense of their own, and they love humans unconditionally. They should be treasured and loved, or at the very least given respect. If Cleveland County leadership consists of people of good character and they are now made aware of the truth of what has been going on, and they should be setting up and making some good changes. If change does not come, then leadership and the position should change. The elected leaders of Cleveland County should be people who care, not just be re-elected, but because they are good people of good character. And I would like to present to you the, um, we have a petition of people who oppose against change of current Cleveland County.
I beg your pardon.
Christopher, and let's give you about an answer. I'll give it. Osh, osh, osh. Like it, Cory, yeah? That's up.
Just earlier in the meeting, uh, my name's Christopher Forge. I'm the coordinator resident of Cleveland County. I'm running this one. I'm currently a resident of the National Guard technician. And, uh, tonight I would like to speak about some recent changes that have taken effect that's, uh, beginning about this week with the National Guard, and how it's directly impacting me and my purpose to try to reach the highest level possible. I'd like to begin by reading just a quick excerpt from the homepage of the National Guard Association of the United States. Established, this is on their homepage, established in sixteen thirty-six when ordinary citizens formed militias to defend against hostile attacks, the National Guard is the country's oldest military branch. The Guard's citizen soldiers have served as the nation's first line of defense since America's birth, and have fought in every major conflict in America's history, contributing to the organization's expensive, expansive history and valuable legacy. These missions are accomplished through emergency relief support during natural disasters such as floods, earthquakes, cars, cars, search and rescue operations to support civil defense authorities, maintenance of vital public services, and counter drug operations. Many of those citizens of Cleveland County may be familiar with Mass Seven that crashed last year. They were one of the survivors, is from this area, and I believe graduated from parents' high school. Uh, I would like to read out loud to everybody in attendance, letters that I have addressed to each of our representatives on the congressional level. This particular letter, they're all the same, they're just changed to address each person. This particular one is to Senator Richard Burr. I'm writing to extreme this consent to the course the People's Congress has taken to allow the uniformed military technicians of the National Guard to be subjected to perloids that result in a twenty percent pay cut from each affected member. And this pleads that the political football situation members like myself find themselves in as a failure of a responsible elected Congress to say part. The resulting cuts to the nation's first line of military defense is, will be devastating to not only the nation, but especially to the volunteered members that take an oath to protect it. I'm requesting immediate action to end the perloids and to restore back pay to those that have already been perloids, and to introduce legislation that will eliminate future situations against the National Guard technician force from happening again. I would like to remind everyone that the act of duty military have been exempt from this for a number of years now, and since the National Guard technicians adhere to the same requirements as the act of duty does, such as training, deployments, orders, uniforms, promotions, et cetera, then the National Guard technicians should easily fall into the same exempt category. So as you can see by the pay cuts, my family is forced to receive the effects of this perloid reach beyond the twenty percent cut. The recent spike in price per barrel of oil last week hit an all-time highs since May of two thousand and twelve, and as a National Guard technician, I have not received a cost of living adjustment to mirror the nation's inflation rate, which inevitably affects the bottom line for my rank on pay. My concerns as a citizen to this county and to this country are how I might afford raising a pregnant family in the midst of uncertain budget concerns that directly disable my ability to provide for my family. Congress has taken my comments and ability to provide a steady income to my family, a position that I have highly been trained for and earned, now is perloid. Do I have to factor twenty percent pay for the rest of this for you? Again, just from the National Guard's issues website, the National Guard's federal mission is to maintain well-trained, well-equipped units available for prompt mobilization during war and provide assistance during national emergencies. In conclusion, as a concerned citizen, I want to be able to rely on the National Guard one hundred percent of the time, not eighty percent of the time.
Of course, you're excited, welcome, Dan White.
I'm Dan White, eighteen twenty-seven, three-three, drug, California, Carolina. I've been fighting issues for three years, and that is school system, misuse of funds. Some of the county commissioners told me that if I got legal documentation from the state, that they would, uh, fall in hate. I got that. I guess they had some meetings with our superintendent, the county commissioners did, and, uh, Mr. Bowles, Bruce Bowles, had said that, uh, they had made a lot of changes. They changed the policy. You change the policy to that was somebody doing something wrong, so it would be right? I'm, I'm here for the tour. We don't need to do nothing. No teacher's job, no teacher's assistant's job, cut some authority's job, and put it in those classrooms and let those teachers go back to go to work. And it's time for our county commissioners to step on to the board and talk to them. They keep bringing up, everybody keep bringing up, we're waiting on SBI report. SBI report. If they're wrongdoing, we don't need no SBI report. We need to handle it ourselves. Uh, and then after this lady about the dogs, uh, I wasn't, I didn't come up here to talk about dogs, but, uh, we need to take care of dogs, but I got a left arm right here that I've got no feeling hardly in my three fingers, because pit bull dogs, they all be out of, period. That's my, that's my feelings of things. I've had my knee operated on, y'all seen me with the limp, and two pit bull dogs got a hold of me, and if I had to drove them to a vehicle clamp, they would pull this arm completely off. You can see the scars that's in my arm, they cut that main blood vein right there, and I like to bled that over pit bull dogs. So, but I am an animal lover, and I got a daughter-in-law that runs a group, and she was a human, uh, is Ashley Plank, that runs a dog room in Houston Springs. They don't, nobody loves dogs no more than I do, but we do need to put some contracts on pigs and chattels, those two breeds for sure, because they will turn on. But I'm here for our tour and our teachers and stuff. County commissioners, I'm asking for your help. Changing policies to make something that was wrong legal. That's not the right way of doing it. We need to put more law enforcement at our schools to protect our kids, given break-ins and debt and everything like that. I'm all about having our insurance department mandate that, y'all get some more damage in there if our, if our school people can't do it, we need to step in.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring in on that trip out of Oregon, you came in, that's what we talked about, the trip home.
Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Thanks, Pete.
Yes, sir.
All the people who have signed up for the citizen's recognition, anyone who has not spoken. And if I had to get big commission, they come up to the court and say, if you have not, you know, one, then again, this time I turn it over to our county manager, David Deere, for the signature.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have six items to be considering, uh, this evening. First and marked item A is the minutes from June fourth, two thousand and thirteen county commission meeting. Item B is a budget amendment in the grant center enterprise fund. This is to recognize the appropriate revenues and expenses in order to operate a grant center enterprise for the next fiscal year. Item C is a budget amendment in the health department. We're asking you to accept two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant revenue from Carolina's healthcare system. This is to be used by the CICO healthcare network to fund indigent patient care in Cleveland County. Item D is an ordinance change to Cleveland County Code of Ordinances. We're asking you to add section six dash one eight to Cleveland County Code of Ordinances, and this is dealing with leased property. Item E is a resolution relieving municipalities of the property tax collection fee charged by the county, when municipal property taxes are one hundred percent granted back to the P E for economic development purposes. Item F is a budget amendment in the emergency management department. We're asking you to accept federal grant funds in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars to use to purchase two all-terrain vehicles that will be used for search and rescue purposes. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, at this time, any questions that I attend to? And if not, if I have a question, it's been just approved.
Somebody put, uh, poos, send it down.
Questions?
Now, second, second.
Mr. Allen, discussion. You and I all the favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Always a special part of our meeting is we have special recognition of individuals or groups that have made great achievements for Cleveland County, and at this time, uh, on the bill, on that bill speaker not, uh, National Recreation Trail Division, Kings Mountain Gateway Trail. Did y'all ladies think, let me get up, if not, uh... Come on, Bill.
Cleveland County has received, uh, special recognition from the U.S. Department of Interior for the construction of the Gateway Trail, and I'd like to share with you a letter from Secretary Sally Jewell. Uh, the Kings Mountain Gateway Trail is a fine addition to the national trail system. This year it joins twenty-seven other newly designated NRTs across the United States for the special recognition. We're very proud of these trails and the spirit of the partnerships and resource conservation that they represent. Trails provide millions of Americans with outstanding opportunities to enjoy America's great outdoors. On Saturday, June the first, two thousand and thirteen, tens of thousands of Americans observed the twenty-first national, national trails today. We hope that you were able to join us in that celebration. Enclosed is your certificate of designation, signed by the Director of the National Park Service and myself, and a set of new trail markers, and we will install those trail markers out on the Gateway Trail. And here is the plaque for you. And I would also like to recognize the Trail Committee.
Let's stand up. Let's say, Chairman, Ron, for asking. Do you like to have a comment?
Uh, just that, we really are very appreciative of this day, honor, and waiting for a lot of work to build it and to build yourself on the trail, and surely it would be a show.
Anyone else like to have a comment?
Yeah, if it hadn't been for Bill McCarter, we wouldn't have traveled here and, and Cleveland County, and we are so grateful for all the help that you all have given us. You've given us all the good support and financial support, and, and you've loaned us meal from time to time, and so we're very grateful for all that.
Commissioner, shall I, if you're coming?
I think it's a great trail. I walk it, enjoy it, and I appreciate it being there. And commended you for the recognition, that's some hard work.
Yeah, we appreciate all the hard work y'all done. It's just one of the few projects that we have done, even though, even though the upper end of Bucks, you know, with the, uh, law fields and so forth, that we working with to do a big project up in there, and even to the south, local, explaining that we are reaching out, we like that whole county to do what we can, like, thank y'all for all this place.
And I appreciate that bench is at the top of that one hill.
Hard to get there.
Sorry, you're wheeling.
Yeah.
Anything about your picture, thank you. You have a lot of that picture up here, reward and everything, or she's not active. Y'all just come up and count.
I'm pretty sure that, uh, you know, paper, certain recognition with every participation to the federal, uh, participant, and make all this possible.
While we're waiting, Mary White Smith has been with us since the beginning, and she is our fabulous secretary, and Carrie, you can relate to that. And Ronnie is our VP for the trail, and Dennis was our vice president, and now he's just in charge of the trail. Um, and Doug, Doug is the vice president, Doug Satterfield, and Mitch Johnson with First National Bank is our treasurer. So we had some really great help to make this possible, and, uh, we are moving forward and hope to start on two more miles of trail in the near future, funding part of that Carolina area.
Malcolm actually changed the oil in the truck yesterday.
And he brings his chainsaw.
If y'all would like to come up front here with the plaque and, and for her, her, her taking the change, we can get a picture.
And Jane Canine, Jane Canine was on our committee for ceremony. Jane, come up here.
Sure, ma'am.
Just because you're retired, doesn't mean you get out of this.
I didn't touch one.
Hi. Yeah. All right, everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
One, two, uh, good juice.
Next, you and I, a really special call for one of the commissioners. Uh, we have been approved in Cleveland County to actively work to take supplies to Cleveland County, Oklahoma during the disaster that they had. And just recently, our vice chair traveled to Cleveland County, Oklahoma with his family, and I wanted to know if your vice chair for comments about his trip, and you may have some, you have some.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, I, I was honored to be able to, uh, to go to Oklahoma, uh, several weeks ago. Took my wife and my son with me. Um, he's eleven, so it was a long drive. We went on a Tuesday, left Tuesday morning and came back Friday morning. Um, so it was a long drive, sixteen hours each way, about, so, um, but it was, um, it was something I thought was very important for us. Whenever we learned that, that, uh, the area that was devastated out in Oklahoma was Cleveland County, Oklahoma, part of Oklahoma City and part of Moore County, or Moore was named the city out there, um, uh, we, you know, had that immediate tie, uh, tying within. So many of our residents, um, as soon as the storm happened, started gathering items, donated money, um, sending items to, uh, to Oklahoma. Um, the, uh, and I have been in contact with the commissioners out in Cleveland County, Oklahoma. We just really wanted to, uh, to show them how much we care about them. Uh, we wanted to follow up on the, the huge, um, response that, that our community had, um, and our, and our passion that we had to, to help these people. This board passed a resolution, um, right after the storm happened, um, in support of, of their communities. Whenever I arrived out there, I, I was honored to be able to speak at the, uh, Oklahoma Association of County Commissioners, and talk about Cleveland County, North Carolina, and the people that we have here, and the, uh, the, uh, the big hearts, um, that we have, that we have here, and talk about our people here. From that point, I went and visited, and this particular picture here, we went and visited a lot of the, the storm, um, devastated areas. This is actually part of a hospital. Uh, it's a pre-natal hospital, it's, um, um, just right on the edge of Oklahoma City, still considered more, uh, Oklahoma, but, um, the, the staff there, the commissioners that I was with, uh... The, the staff there, the commissioners that I was with, named Rod Cleveland, he was telling me about the staff there, there, the heroic deeds they did. They were about full, whenever they, they're, almost all the rooms were full. No one was injured at that hospital. Directly across the road, uh, one of the somber insights was wreaths and flowers put on the side of the road in front of what is now just a concrete path. Before the storm, it was a gas station. And there was a mother and her little girl that booted into the gas station during the storm and, and lost their lives there. We also went by neighborhoods that, that were totally ravaged, ravaged just nothing there. It looked like, um, part of a landfill. So the, the, it was just, it was just unbelievable sights that we saw there. But whenever I got to talk to the people there, and not only the commissioners, but the residents there, they were so appreciative of, of Cleveland County, North Carolina, and, and what our, our county has done here, what our county residents have done. And I didn't know where the time this picture shows presenting the resolution to them. They passed the resolution as well. And I'd like to read that resolution and present that really to the residents of Cleveland County, because it's, it's not what the county governor did, it's what, what the county residents did. It says, "A resolution recognizing and thanking Cleveland County, North Carolina for support of Cleveland County tornado victims. Whereas on May nineteenth, Norman and Little Axe area of Cleveland County suffered severe damage from a tornado, and whereas on May twentieth, South Oklahoma City in Moore was hit with an EFI tornado that killed twenty-four people and destroyed or damaged several thousand homes and business properties, and whereas people and local governments across the nation came to aid to Cleveland County residents. And whereas Cleveland County, North Carolina established donation stations throughout the county collecting tractor trailers full of items and collecting several thousands of dollars for tornado victims of Cleveland County, Oklahoma. And whereas Cleveland County, Oklahoma and Cleveland County, North Carolina not only share a common name, but also compassionate service for its residents and others. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County would like to gratefully thank Cleveland County, North Carolina for their generosity toward the residents affected by the tornadoes adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen." Again, it was an honor for me to be able to, to go out there and see this. And I saw so many things. I'll share one quick, quick story. We were driving just right outside of, of, um, right outside Oklahoma City, head to Moore, which is a suburb. And I know a lot of people in the, in the audience tonight will, will appreciate the dire circumstances they went through. There was a horse farm that was directly outside of the, the, uh, Oklahoma City. They had about four hundred horses, thoroughbreds, um, and they talked about the value of the horses and everything, but they lost all of them, every horse out there. They, uh, they worked to try to save the ones they could, but they ended up losing all of them. They had so much damage to animals that were out there that they ran out of IV, um, and the only option they had was to actually put them down with the, um, by shooting. So it was a tough, tough time for everybody out there. So, but I, Mr. Chair, I consider it an honor for me to be able to travel out there. Bridget would support on, on that. I know, I knew you all wanted to go with me out there, but the bridge wouldn't hold that much.
Jason, thank you for taking the initiative. Go. I just want to, uh, we can show you down to, uh, to Tina down in New Orleans, at the same dedication that was there. I know the city showed it up in, uh, down, down there. And so it was just good to show you for the, uh, high citizens that we have who cares for others. So thank you, thank your time, your, and your time to go out there and represent.
Well, if I can add one more thing, too. They, uh, were so impressed with our residents here and our, um, our county, um, even before I could mention them, they asked about maybe forming a relationship, a sister county type relationship, or give, sharing information, and, and we've already started to, um, to start working on that. They've had some questions about how we do some things here, and so we're, we're starting to work on that, and so it's, it's a very beneficial trip.
Okay, Commissioner, you talk then. Thanks, Jason. Next, the gentleman, uh, here in, at this time, I'm going to call him Carter, uh, the other gentleman. Oh, pardon. Let me get ahead. Where's that one? There it is. Come on up to me. That's... About patching your lung.
Was that? I'm not asking today, I'm not asking for your lung. So I just come back from another meeting. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you. I'm here to not tell you a little bit about what we've been doing the last year in the Forest Service here in the county. And as usual, I aspire to have a short, foodie slide show near the dorm room to see some of the actual work we've been doing. It's a lot easier to look at some pictures than just up here talking. These are some fires we've had in two thousand and twelve, with open fire for sixteen acres. It was a relatively calm year in terms of a wildfire. Construction of a brick to save valued over one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. This fire occurred in March this year. It was a wildfire that got away underneath the building and destroyed a man's outdoor. The pre-burning continues to be the leading cause of fires here in the county. People burning, led to escape. Other causes of fires from machine use, miscellaneous secondary fires. Can't have a law to put a fire in that picture. Here's one of our tractors. We had to use a control wildfire, and we always use it on patrol burners to help keep, make sure the fire stays in check. And we completed a hundred and fifty-nine acres of hazard reduction burn. This helps improve the forest and reduces, uh, wildfire chances. And we also use a lot of state, pay a little money to assist landowners in completing these burns. I went to California, and you can meet some interesting characters out there. In terms of forest management, we continue to write management plans. We wrote a hundred and twenty-eight management plans on five thousand five hundred and sixty-two acres. We did site preparation work on three hundred and twenty-three acres. That includes heavy equipment along with herbicide application. We've got a skider that we can actually play, uh, spray herbicide to help control the unbesarred species. By the harvesting, we checked a lot of water quality sites. Here again, Bieber for Stillman County, seven hundred and ninety acres of ten were inspected. Nine free forest operations were inspected to ensure forest practice guidelines were We planted eight hundred and one acres with help from other nature. The rest of it was done by hand and machine plant. Cleveland County ranked thirty-seventh in the state in terms of timber harvesting and littering means. Our forest development program, this is the new logo, the new symbol for the forest development program. It helps landowners get approximately forty percent of reforestation costs to do work on their property for forestry. They receive over thirty-six thousand dollars in pasture to offset the cost. Insects and disease, we still going out helping homeowners if they got shade tree problem, uh, help attorneys problem. Gypsy moth, it's not here yet. There were no gypsy moths found in Cleveland County this year, so that's a good thing. So the hyalobid activity remains loaded. I've gotten a number of calls on ips people, so that's a similar type of insect, and it usually just kills a couple of trees. Uh, we still promote Smokey Bear. We have Cleveland County Bear. We try to get the Smokey Bear around to the first grade classes and tell them about the Smokey Bear and banning wildfires of that state, and they can be. We've gizpated a lot of training, and we call training various classes statewide in the county. This is our new assistant county ranger. The previous ranger left for Pope County. He took a job over there as an accounting ranger there. So for six months out of the year, I was the long ranger, so I don't need to say the new move, I want to come out. But some other highlights that I didn't include on that, uh, the Forest Service remains active in the Cleveland County Firefighters Association. We help the fire departments with acquiring surplus military vehicles. We have a hazer, uh, procure a five-ton military transport vehicle. Uh, there's no cost for this vehicle to the fire department, and they can figure based on their needs. In two thousand and twelve, uh, the fire department took advantage of matching grants through the state, and they utilized twenty-four, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars to protect firefighters and approve equipment to buy forest fires. And since January first, two thousand and thirteen, there have been twenty-six fires that have burned seventeen acres in the county for this year. With all this rain, currently fire, uh, it remains loaded. Fire activity remains loaded here in the county. So that is a good thing. In terms of insects and disease, um, I don't know if any of you have heard about the emerald ash bore, but it was recently found in North Carolina, and it affects ash trees. It was introduced accidentally, came in on ship from Asia. Actually, Granville, Person, the Vance counties are now on quarantine. And you may be wondering, how does this affect us here in Cleveland County? Well, there's not a lot of ash trees here. There are some. A lot of times, you'll see them around in people's yards and everything, they get in there and they actually hurt the tree. This insect has done a lot of damage in the eastern part and the midwestern part of the United States. And ash baseball bats, I saw an article on the news the other day, they're, if this insect keeps going at its current rate, thankfully, in serious jeopardy, if you've got an ash baseball bat coming up, hang on, well, they probably won't be meaningful. Uh, there's no national pressure for this insect. So we keep a monitor on that. The forest management, like I said, there was a hundred and twenty-eight management plans written, uh, landowners received over thirty-six thousand dollars in forest development program monies, uh, seven hundred and three dollars we utilized in the conservation reserve program, which is a federal, uh, program. Information, education, county personnel came to three different types of fire control related training in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. Since I was the long ranger here, Smokey didn't make as many appearances at the elementary school, which now the new ranger on board, hopefully that one will go back up this year. It's kind of hard to do the smoking program by yourself, still, I mean. But we did make appearances at the Relief for Life out here at Perry Mountain, Wisconsin. Uh, we also helped teach basic chainsaw safety classes to the FFA classes at Burns and Grace High School, in conjunction with farm, early farm safety programs. You know, we worked with Burns, FFA with various classes on how to mark timber and waterfall issues regarding the current, uh, final annual harvest that's going on up there at Burns High School up there. So y'all have any questions for me?
Has always has questions. Well, I serve as a warden. Christian, y'all want to start? Or they may ask a question. I had to dig on this. Uh, yeah, sorry. You know, we lost several, our military personnel by fires out of there, um, one of them was, uh, I think now. The question I have, I know we've tried, we have a lot of burns, basically, but I'm assuming to get a bit of an underbrush. And my understanding is out in Arizona and California, for some reason, they don't go out and do control burns and get rid of the underbrush. Is that one of the major problems with all the fires that you see in California and Arizona that they don't work to control the, uh, underbrush and, and, and trees?
That's part of the problem. Uh, other problems include insect and disease damage. They have a lot of weather-related fires in that area where it also contributes to hazard reduction burning. A lot of times, they can hear in the camp, we're limited on where we can actually do burning, because we have to manage our smoke to make sure it goes in a certain direction and doesn't affect homeowners, residents in a negative impact way. And when you start dealing with federal lands in other areas that are, uh, in developed areas, they have to do the same type thing. And it kind of ties our hands as fire managers on where that smoke goes. So if people didn't really want, um, to lose their property, they would probably allow us to come in and burn and deal with the hassle of maybe a day's worth of smoke so we could reduce that fuel. So we have to really be careful on how and where we plant our fires. But yes, it does reduce the intensity of fires. You know, even if we burned an area this year that the neighbors were going to fall, and you have a fire the following year, but that intensity of that power will be a lot less than what it would be in pre-burn.
And just to show you, I'm not quite all that camp, all get everything. You reported last year that, and I saw the, uh, the, the picture, you were still telling us you had some type of agreement, we're getting another vote here for the negative, that kind of thing.
Yes, we actually, the state just took, uh, just purchased, and it was actually delivered just a few months ago, we call a CAT D, uh, D five K. It's a new model, it's kind of a smaller tractor, it's brand new, and it's staged over in Rutherford County. And it's kind of a, a zone tractor that you wheel between Cleveland and Rutherford County. And we've actually put on another operator over there. So before, we had three tractors to cover eight counties, well, now, or two tractors to cover eight counties, and now we've got three, four tractors of eight. They have a couple of recalls. When this dropped, the nine counties, eight other counties around Cleveland that's in this district, you know, if they have fires, there's only so many tractors available. So it's done on priority basis, too.
Thank you again for reporting. And if there's any questions, have any questions?
Also, impact is due. I may, uh, allude to the two thousand and thirteen biennial report, it's on the website. So if you want to find out the other organizations and other facets that I didn't talk about with the Forest Service and see some of the numbers, uh, I encourage you to go online and check out that report. It's on our webpage at W W W dot N C Forest Service dot com.
Thank you. Thank you, man. And where I got Evans, Governor Manito, and now Trump, Carter, under here, on the map, we have the Republican Day, show three, position of the secretist's passion, uh, who is President of Magic, manufacturing, presidential, and the stick. Get that out there.
This is area is approximately, um, thirteen parcels and nine acres along Long Branch Road between, uh, Rutherford, Kings Mountain. There are multiple parcels within the rezoning request, and as you mentioned, there are actually two different zoning districts. The R M district is the tan area, the R district is the white area. And the proposed rezoning is outlined in the back line there. We have a recommendation from both the planning board and planning consultant at Isothermal. Jim Edwards at Isothermal indicated that he had reviewed the request and visited the area, properties located on the east and west sides of Long Branch Road at Molnix Drive between Bethlehem Church and US twenty-nine. The area is primarily low-density residential with a mix of site building and manufactured single-family units and vacant land. There are scattered commercial and industrial uses along Long Branch Road and the general vicinity. The current zoning of the lots included in this request is residential and manufactured homes and parks. The area across Long Branch Road is on restricted residential north of Molnix Drive, that's that bright yellow area that you see to the left. The future land use designation is residential for all of this area. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use plan, and the map amendment would maintain consistency with the surrounding residential land uses. Of the thirteen parcels requested to be rezoned, the owners of the eight parcels have signed and supported petition. However, these owners hold less than twenty percent of the total acreage. It's my understanding that the petitioner has attempted to contact the remaining owners without success. Current controlled parcels, uh, one oh one nine six, which is called the Ayers, has not been determined. The decision of the owners of the remaining acres may be made on at the public, public hearing tonight. Approval of this map amendment would no longer allow manufactured housing parks or even manufactured homes, uh, which may be considered beneficial or detrimental in view of the remaining landowners. Therefore, their decision should bear on the board's decision. Barring the objection from the remaining property owners, the requested map amendment could be appropriate and consistent. Barring the objection from the remaining property owners, the requested MAP amendment could be appropriate and consistent with the land use plan. And the planning board also looked at the case and Isothermal's recommendation. And they're, they have split, like there were three of three. But the fact that they voted several times and there could kind of have consensus on this particular case. The, their two points that they made during the meeting was the area was designated as residential in the two thousand fifteen land use plan and restricted residential would be consistent with the plan. They all agree on that, that any kind of residential zoning would be consistent with land use plan. Board could not reach consensus on whether the amendment was reasonable and in the best interest of the public in this particular case, not knowing how all of those property owners felt. And even there was discussion about how the property owners would consider this amendment that would be remaining in that arch district. A lot of good discussion occurred that night. We had some of the property owners there here in the petition was there. Maybe you'll hear a little more comment tonight from some of those property owners.
Any questions to Mr. Carter? Here in, uh, here in, uh, just have anyone who wishes to speak for, or again, the ordinance of changing from rural residential manufacturing and residential, restricted residential, please come up with an address at this time.
Hey, I'm Edens Patterson. I live in the local biowall right there. Basically, the reasoning for us wanting to do this, you know, there's been speculation on parts of that land of mobile homes being brought in. And also that would be under a out of state landlord, you know, that could be, I guess the people that be the landlord would be in New Jersey. Or is in New Jersey. And we were kind of, you know, people's talk around there. So we want to keep the integrity of our land. Most of it's on the sidewalks around there, wooded areas and such like that, you know. You know, a little bit of not let our property values go down, we'd be afraid what would happen if this was the property approved. If that was ever happening. Also, we're just kind of, you know, hoping to, you know, maybe with this passing, like our property values go up, you know, we can do awesome. And, you know, just to keep it, you know.
Anyone who wishes to speak for, or again, this one, thank you.
You know, my name is Brian. Basically, I would have wanted five crew of, um, parcels that connect to the property. That were there possibly considering moving in some mobile homes. I have a three acre lot. The property would, where the mobile homes were going to go. It's a narrow track and I guess what we talked about the other week was the narrowest part, they couldn't pick any homes there. But it's not, it's not wide enough. But at the back, it opens up and I guess the back portion, right there between the R and, you know, and hand, where the hand's at there. It, it opens up pretty good size there. And that area is where there could be places of those homes. And that's exactly where my property joins. And I have a very private lot. The problem is, my, my property is kind of down, you know, and a little valley. And that property would be up on the hill. You know, I don't want to walk out my back door and, and look up on the hill and see you mobile homes like I just don't want that. I feel like, kind of like Mr. Patterson was talking about, the people that own this property and that are considering this, that they don't even live in the state. And that town, I believe, quickly, as long as they're getting their rent checked, the property there, less if the property's being maintained correctly also. Like I say, I, I've invested a lot of money, the past fourteen years on my property. And, you know, I just really think that it would, it would pretty much destroy everything that I work for. The money that I, I spent on my house and with help swimming pool, I go very much swimming pool and, and very private. And that's why I moved out of the city in the first, because I live in Kings Mountain. Grew up in Kings Mountain, Tampa, but then, you know, and there was nothing wrong with that, but I just liked to be kind of out on a little bit more private. And I just feel like that's going to be taken away from me and my life. And not just myself, but there's several other, you know, homeowners that have grew there, that will be affected also. Yeah, just fall on a house on the property station line, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he also has a house, but a lot of it, he had some kind of mortgage. So I just, I really would like for y'all to consider rezoning, restricted residential. And, you know, that way you could get those folks for some property there to rent. At least they'd look big mobile homes, you know, they would pay that time. I appreciate your time. I just hope that you can take that into consideration more and more as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone who wishes to speak for, or again, this one, to vote for? Anyone who wants to speak for, or against? Seeing that one coming out, here in, uh, person was clear, public area closed. I just, uh, commission, please. I'd like to ask Mr. Ford, what?
Getting in this area, getting in this whole area set up with mobile homes and lots and so forth.
Put a map at your place before the meeting, I apologize, that's when they would get in on the agenda, but that will hopefully illustrate where the concentration of manufactured homes are. And I think it clearly shows, you know, that they're not in this area. There are long spring wood across Long Branch and the other quadrant there. There's a large concentration of single family steel built homes there on Steer Street and Long Branch in that quadrant. Which abuts this area. So I can foresee these folks extending this R R area, I don't know, north there to cover the rest of the neighborhood eventually. And I think that this might probably illustrate that too.
I guess my, my concern is, is only twenty percent of the people, you know, I mean, you got more than that. They can only control twenty percent of the land.
Acre, that's true.
Acre, you know, and that's, that's not a lot when you have twenty percent of the acreage to control eighty percent. You know, I, I know the concerns and, you know, where I live and you know what happens in front of my house. That makes the same thing, you know, they divide it up, you know. I, I probably got concerned with that only twenty percent of the acres controlled. Just the eighty percent myself, especially knowing the area that there are a lot of manufactured homes and there's some nice homes in that area, you know, on single, single lots, you know. I think probably one of the concerns is, is they talked about a trade park, I know there are rules and regulations that govern trade parks and so forth, and then what happened, government files were permitted before they even, they even got a trade park.
Yeah, in the, in the white area, you do have to get a conditional use permit for a mobile park. But in the yellow area, you just walk in and get permit, there's no public area required.
One of the concerns I've got is, is because of the way that it's kind of sectioned out. It's really targeting one property owner. And you've got a lot of area around there that's R M, a residence manufacturer. And I'm not sure why, why it wasn't approached to, if the entire of the community was, were to go restricted residential. It was just targeted to that one, it looks like it's targeting one property owner. And that, that to me gets into personal property rights. Man owns a property, it's reasonable, should be able to do what he wants to with it. But if the whole community out there, and I'm talking to one towards Steer Street and all these others out there, they're, um, are, are set up now for R M. If they were, if they were all to come in and say that they were behind this, that would be a different, for me, it'd be a different story. But targeting one property owner seems unfair, even though they, they may not live here right now. They may not, they might not be welcome, still is, is personal property.
I guess another question, can we send this back? For example, just like Michael Paul said, can we send this back for future studies to give them opportunity to take in the whole neighborhood? Or do we have to make?
You can make the area, you can make the area smaller, but you can't enlarge it.
Make it smaller and not larger.
And you can also change the designation. You could go to an R, or you choose any zoning district. But the fact that you're holding a public area to change the zoning classification of those parcels that have been advertised, that's what you're here to look at tonight. So it's, you're not restricted to looking at just that one designation. You can make any designation that you choose, which are most appropriate, but you can't go beyond that boundary that's been advertised. That would take, that's not a public area.
How many of the property owners, you said there was, assuming that there's thirteen neighboring properties?
There are thirteen total properties and... Eight, eight signs, need support?
Do we have to find a new curriculum? The way it's advertised, we either need to approve the petition or deny the petition.
Or modify it.
Yeah, or we can modify it to make it residential, to restricted residential, which is worst case scenario. Or just leave it R M, called as consistent with north and south.
And that could give us some guidance, so I had, I got bigger group.
Or can't make it larger?
No, you couldn't make it larger. That'd be up to them to come back with a petition representing a larger area.
Mission's way out of it, it's residential manufacturing to the south, to the lower hand by making it restricted residential. You're taking the consistency of the whole area out. I don't know what's going residential. I think that a little bit loud would be pretty much the same, to be conditional use of residential.
Yeah, if you haven't given them some, that would technically, it would trigger a public area for a manufacturer park. Rather than just being able to walk in, or my dad's gonna say there is, is a permanent.
Captain, how long, how long the, how long they've worked on getting signatures, do you know that? As far as the two thousand thirteen...
About a second, probably.
So that won't be an idea?
Took a few days.
Few days?
Mm-hmm. I mean, we went and, and got, you know, the ones who was in it that wanted it and the ones that he, you know, that was in that block who, who all wanted it. You know, and there was a couple there that we went to their house time to, and never could find anybody there. So we tried to make it, you know, more, you know, uniform looking sections, what you call a spot, zoning.
My, my, I believe you said, see, this is something that, that, that the neighborhood is wanting to work for. Is to, um, to look at that whole area instead of just that one. I, I have a problem signaling out the, the one property owner. Essentially, that's what, that's what's being said. Singing out one property owner. If the entire area were to be moved to R R, or restricted residential and the signatures were gathered for that, that would be a stronger case.
The ones that are already in residential manufacturing, if we were to move it to residential, then basically what they have there would be banned off?
It's opposite to speak at home, so it would not, it would not affect any of them because they're all speak at home. And R even, in R, you can have them all alone.
Go ahead, move it.
But if they were to come in, they can do it without requesting?
You just get a permit. You can't do them all apart unless you have a...
I have all the homes that are, what do you call it, especially the manufactured one?
Could it be used?
No, you could put a regular trailer in there and it doesn't have to be a manufactured, what do you call it?
Monstrum.
Monstrum, that monster, it's regular trailer. And resident, and regular residential.
Yeah, yeah, you can have steel built monsters, mobile homes, manufactured homes, any of that. Any of that's it.
I think I'm allowed to go with Commissioner Hall. I think that we're penalizing individually, even though he doesn't live in our county or even in our state, he is a taxpayer. And with this group, I would like to see him go and spread out if he want to and do something for the whole area. And I'll even make a motion that we deny the rezoning.
A motion that we deny the rezoning? I'll second that, and I'll say, I'm opposed to, on favor of you, right here. And four, and, uh, we look at the manifesto. Moving on to the board of managers, I think Bill. Here, I think you said, I'll get a list of through this part, so let's go through them, go our way through.
The first board I got the story to is the Veterans Advisory Council. When the Veterans Advisory Council was formed, we had six applicants for that board. Since then, we have gotten two more of our citizens who are interested in serving on that board. So we do have one available appointment to the Veterans Advisory Council. I have Corey Donalds checking in Lankford, but I have one vacancy for a three year term, so it expires in two thousand sixteen.
I'll make a motion here for Corey Donalds.
Next board before you is the industrial facilities and pollution control finance, the financing authority. This board does not need it on a regular basis, only as needed. David Leonhardt, Doug Wine, and Bill Chambers are recorded tonight. I need, there are two vacancies on that board. Actually, it says three year term, but there are six year terms, which expire in June two thousand nineteen. David Leonhardt and Doug Wine, current assistant board and have said they would serve another term.
So you got two that said they would, I'll make a motion for a re-appointment.
Under aware, the J C P C board is made up of several required positions from the community such as law enforcement and chief police, judges. In the J C P C, that's a... And the JCPC does a fantastic job with recruiting members, ensuring that they have training. So before you tonight, I have a recommendation from the JCPC board for you to appoint. Jeff Ledford, Paul Dees, Rebecca Harris, Titus Augler, David Schweppe, Ray Furley, Melissa Spearman, Dr. Colin Kenny, Nelson Hunter, and Connie Fairington to that board. They're two-year terms, which would expire in June two thousand fifteen. Regency workforce development, this again is another board that requires members who actually work in, throughout the community and, or in businesses throughout the community. I have a forty, there's two, a point, two vacancies right now for three-year terms. I have a four-year David Farr, Vince Reese, and Kathy Robertson, as citizens who expressed interest. But I also have a four-year letter from Isothermal requesting that David Farr be reappointed and Vince Reese be appointed to this board.
I think motion would be accepted, recommendation.
There's currently one member of the library board who is, whose term is expiring this month. Connie Savell, and she is the only one that, that I have that expresses interest in this board and she is willing to serve another term. It will be a three-year term to expire June two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion for reappointment.
Isothermal Planning Board of Directors. Larry, Julie currently serves on the Isothermal Planning Board of Directors. I have numerous applicants for this vacancy. I do have a letter from Isothermal that says, Mr. Julie or another individual may be appointed. I have checked with Mr. Julie and he would be willing to serve another term in a year ago. There's currently two vacancy, two terms expiring on this board. I have a number of people that expressed interest. I have tried to get ahold of the, the Leslie, Dr. Richardson, who heads up this board. I have not heard from her, so I'm assuming that no news is good news and that these folks are active on this board because she didn't express otherwise. Kathy Robertson and Janice Moore both currently serve on this board. So they are available for reappointment for a three-year term. But there's several others that, whatever. Um, we did a little, after the last county board meeting, when we didn't have as many members attending as, as typical, we, we went ahead and looked at attendance and, and asked those that haven't maybe attended as, as much as they need, should be. Who would, who, just to make sure people are willing to serve or how committed they are. We did have one gentleman, Darius Griffin, who did tender his resignation to that board. So I have one vacancy right now, there's several people. You have them before you, but it would be to appoint one member to fill the unexperienced, unexpired term of Mr. Griffin. His term would expire at the end of this year, December two thousand thirteen, and then reappoint him after that, if, if he had it. But you have it before you.
Names, are here, names are listed. And they'd be names submitted to the floor or is it actually one?
I mean, they can be submitted from the floor, it's, I mean.
I've got a gentleman that asked, actually has had training, has asked to be on board. A commission chairman at, they down.
I'll make a motion.
They, they live in the county or ETJ, ETJ King's Club?
Yes, in, in.
He lives in the city, city limits of King's. And I thought we wouldn't put him on our plan. Board that was not actually in the county until, I know David serves on, he serves on planning, zoning, building, king's club. So I thought.
He just bears interest.
But.
The rest of these are their own here, do they live in ETJ or not the county?
I'll have to see that for free.
We would reach, well, Dara Crawford is, is, he doesn't serve on any other board right now. Two of the gentlemen serve on the board adjustments, so I consent bill, Mr. Crawford's applications are reviewed. I think he's been involved in planning in another state. And so I, I thought he would probably be a good candidate for this board. Historic Preservation currently has two vacancies. These positions have been vacant since December, but we have been, we didn't have any, many, much interest in it. So I have before you a number of people tonight for you to consider for, for this board. One, Melanie Ray currently serves on this board and is eligible, and I have spoken with her and she does want to be reappointed. And then we got two other positions available, so if you would, whatever your will is. But they would be for four-year terms and then expire in June two thousand seventeen.
Question, on this board, set up, you know, it's like requirements or something for individuals to serve on that board?
You got geographical requirements and educational requirements. You got three representatives from cities, three representatives from county, and one representative from Historic Shelby Foundation. And all of them, or the majority of them, have to have an interest or educational background in Historic Preservation.
So do we need to do a little more research before these folks are performing anything to make sure they fit the criteria?
Well, now we, the majority, even a twenty-three didn't have any experience would affect them for it. We've got four that are only now that do have some experience.
What about the geographical?
Well, one I know, I know one that I spoke with who lives in Riverland.
Do we know the makeup of the current members of the ones that were not re, that were not reappointed?
Yeah, if you scroll up.
At the very right, they were the, they were the representatives.
Yeah, if you scroll up, you'll see the current board roster.
You got one county and one city. You're good, yeah.
Yeah, I feel welcome.
And if systems do that, that would be planned yesterday. Paul and Frank, hand the words on, Lord Justin.
Town of Boilings Springs, Lake Edward. We have before you a letter from the town of Boilings Springs. Ed White and Paul Bridges currently serve on this board and the town is recommending that these gentlemen be reappointed to serve a three-year term, which would end June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Ed White and Paul Bridges.
This is a question for the ETJ, Boilings Springs.
And it's booked, it was at this time to ask the audience if there's anyone who wishes to be appointed to that board. And you all just state their name.
Make a motion for a good point. Commissioner reports.
We have that one.
Oh, we have one, we have one. Resolution, project, moving. I really love that one, that probably won't up there, it was a great issue.
Uh, last week, the county received a letter from the rural center that Project Knoll was awarded a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar building reuse grant. As part of that grant, the county needs to adopt a resolution, authorizing resolution by the governing body of applicant. This, this resolution notes that the county would provide a five percent match to this project. And that the county manager would be authorized to sign all correspondence in connection with the grant. And that the county will comply with all federal, state, and local laws. So I have that resolution, you each have a copy of that before you. And it's coming from our office. If you, if you see fit to approve that resolution tomorrow.
Motion for.
Motion, last year.
I'll say, I'll say.
Discussion. Here, non-honorable, raise your right hand.
Uh, to the commissioner reports.
First one, last year versus today.
It has been a busy couple weeks since we met last time. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to you on, very difficult. One thing I, I just feel, that nation, the young man, he even spoke at, at National Guard. He understands that the Smith, that we have control over. He's really just trying to get the word out, lots of parolers that are being forced upon the National Guard, National Guardsmen. And he, he got a little choked up when he was talking about his family. He and his wife are expecting to birth a baby in a month. As a matter of fact, in order for him to be here tonight, he probably got in hot water. He had his wife rescheduled at three o'clock or something, so that he could be here tonight, so. But gracious you, if you're, if you're a tenant, it's been a while.
Bring up the date, it was so much heat we got before the meeting, some of the things we need to discuss. I think I'll refer to the next meeting, so that's a good one. But we do, I'm gonna be out of town on the twenty-third, Jason is alternate for the RPO. They're moving ahead with RPO, NPO, so Phil and Jason will meet in a special meeting, but it's on the twenty-third. Like my party, I'm just guessing, but April put it on the calendar, so it's there, so. Anyway, Hank, the, the platinum guest and candidate wanted to make sure that it would be all right if he come back again. We can get figured out this time. So I told him it would, it would be fine that he will be coming back and April will be putting out a what is, what does it say, memorandum, memorandum of understanding, is what the group will be doing. And they, they should have it sometime, maybe next month, I'll tell them, Bill.
I hope they now have it the twenty-third.
And we've got to take it to all NISU counties, E. Cleveland County with Bill, we don't do that. We don't have to be with each one of the, this all need to sign on, if they don't, then. You know, they can have representative, but if the King of, Shelby, Bull and Spring will be booming now. If anything less, a, a plate of a thousand can be, take the big deal number, and a ten, whatever, not, not voting. And the rest of the county, in small NISU counties, you're welcome to.
Um, just to bring you up to date on the county commissioner search, we have gone through the applications. We have, are doing, conducting some interviews this week, today and tomorrow. And look forward to continuing on until we find the right candidate for Cleveland County. Again, want to thank David for stepping in and being here for us, he's really, he's very helpful in a lot of situations here in the county for us. And I appreciate it, appreciate all the hard work that the other county commissioners have done in this search and the input and efforts in looking for county commissioners. And also I just want to mention something about the animal control. There's, everyone here has been very actively involved with animal control and looking at, a lot of changes been made in the last ten years with animal control. And we always look for ways to make changes and have made some changes recently that I think are a positive matter that we need to get them in place. And I think it'll give a benefit that will allow them to get things for us.
Carrie?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Trump. On a good thing, a real good thing that I did and I really enjoyed, which I like my plan. I'm now up to nine hundred and sixty-five kids for their first flight. Nineteen last Sunday for their first flight and they're scaling Mary's bench, so we got twenty. We got one, we got twenty kids that got the final bird patch. Sorry, I was going to do that, pull my tail out there. All right, you know what, I set the copy of that one. You can take it.
Okay, we will now be to recess, to reconvene tomorrow morning, tenth of July at ten AM at the Grand Center. We'll close session, discuss the first bill matter. This is, we'll kind of patch you one forty-two dash three eighteen point one one day six.
Oh, my. Over to you.
Make me read the paper.
Make that one.
Read the paper. Okay, motion, motion.
Say.
Say.
Here, I'll play it, say, right, right.
Yeah, someone good, they, they come here and somebody is.